I call to order the special meeting of the Glendale City Council for April 5th, 2016. May we have the roll call?
Council members, Devine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Aaron Najarian.
Here.
May we have you report?
The Jennifer, the April 5th, 2016 special public meeting of the city council was posted on Wednesday, March 30th, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Home.
Thank you. Will you read the first item?
Sure. If you'll allow me, I'll actually read through the entire first item, and there is a considerable part of this. First, before you is general manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding property-assessed clean energy PACE programs. One A is a resolution consenting to the inclusion of properties within the City of Glendale City in the California Statewide Communities Development Authority, CSCDA, open PACE program, authorizing CSCDA to accept applications from property owners, conduct contractual assessment proceedings, and levy contractual assessments within the city and authorizing related actions. B is a resolution consenting to the inclusion of properties within the City of the California in the California Municipal Finance Authority, CMFA, PACE program, authorizing CMFA to accept applications from property owners, conduct contractual assessment proceedings, and levy contractual assessments within the city and authorizing related actions. C is a resolution consenting to the inclusion of properties within the City of California Enterprise Development Authority, CEDA, PACE program, authorizing CEDA to accept applications from property owners, conducting contractual assessment proceedings, and levy contractual assessments within the city, authorizing the city to become an associate member of the SADA Joint Powers Authority, and authorizing related actions. D is a resolution consenting to the inclusion of properties within the city in California Home Finance Authority, Golden State Finance Authority, GSFA, AB 811 PACE program, authorizing GSFA to accept applications from property owners, conduct contractual assessments, proceedings, and levy contractual assessments within the city, authorizing the city to become a member of GSFA Joint Powers Authority and authorizing related actions. Finally, E is a resolution consenting to the inclusion of the properties within the city in the GSFA Community Facility District Number 2014-1, Clean Energy Finance Renewable Energy Improvements, Energy Efficiency and Water Conservation Improvements, and Electrical Vehicle Charging Infrastructure pursuant to GSFA's SB 555 PACE program and authorizing related actions.
Thank you. Mr. Archoa.
Yes, sir. Very briefly, we have had a great deal of interest, and I'm sure you've read a great deal about the PACE program, property-assessed clean energy program, and you see several resolutions here in your packet that animate a number of programs that would be available to Glendale homeowners. The basic idea is allowing folks to make sustainable improvements, sustainability improvements to their homes, and use the assessment tool, property assessment tool, as repayment. To give you a general overview of the various iterations of this project, we'll have GWP Council Christine Godinez give you a brief staff report.
Christine?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Christine Godinez with the City Attorney's Office, here today on behalf of Glendale Water and Power to just briefly discuss with you the PACE programs. I know that many of you are very familiar with PACE. You have the staff report, and many of you have long been proponents of sustainability efforts in Glendale and looking for unique ways to help residents finance these types of improvements. But for the benefit of any property owners and members of the public that might be tuning in, PACE stands for Property-Assessed Clean Energy. It's a bit of a misnomer because PACE allows for financing not only of electrical vehicle infrastructure, renewable energy projects, energy efficiency projects, but also water conservation improvements and seismic improvements to properties in participating jurisdictions. So the way that PACE works is that it's operated by a joint powers authority, and the joint powers authority retains an administrator or various administrators that oversee the program and run the program. So the administrators are really the interface with the public and with the community as far as PACE is concerned. And so the way it works is that a property owner that would be interested in financing improvements on their property would sign a contract with the PACE Joint Powers Authority, and that would allow for the assessment to be added to the property tax bill of the property owner, either as a voluntary contractual assessment or as a special tax. And I want to be very clear, because I know folks get nervous when we talk about assessments and taxes, this is very much voluntary, and it's only for property owners that choose to participate. It's not a citywide assessment or a tax on property owners generally in the city. The city's role in this is also very limited. The JPA would issue bonds typically to finance the program. The city does not issue bonds, does not guarantee the bonds, and does not administer or oversee the program. That's all handled by the Joint Powers Authority with its program administrator. We don't sign contracts with the property owners. All that the city council would be doing is authorizing these PACE programs to operate within the boundaries of the City of Glendale. So you'd be adding the City of Glendale to the district of these PACE programs and authorizing these various JPAs to issue bonds and to initiate the assessments on interested property owners' properties. The city already does participate in the PACE programs offered by the Los Angeles County, and based on data that we've received from the county, there are currently 99 properties that are PACE-financed under the county program in Glendale. But by adding these additional five PACE programs, it would simply give Glendale residents additional options, so they could shop around for the best interest rate, the terms and conditions that seem best for them. And I should add that these PACE financings are available for commercial properties, residential, multifamily, and in some cases for nonprofits, as long as, you know, it can be added to, as long as they're taxable, can be added to the tax assessment.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
A couple of weeks ago, Mr. Zern and myself had a meeting with someone who represented kind of an alternative to PACE. It was the same program, but it was a different vendor than the county. Does this affect that at all?
I'm not sure which of the vendors you spoke to, but we've requested city council authorization for a number of PACE programs, five, and I would believe that would probably include that vendor.
Micrphone.
It's my understanding that previously the two entities authorized by the county were participating. This will expand that to include more. I mean, it's one of those things, the more, the better.
Right, that's what I wanted to make sure.
And it's an open market. It provides for competition, so it's all good.
It's all, so it would be as many as are permissible under the program, so it wouldn't just be limited to a certain amount? So if more came into the market, they would automatically be included? Or we have to go back and include them? I guess that's my question.
So we are requesting authorization for the PACE programs administered by four joint powers authorities. We're currently members of two, and then there's two additional. If any additional joint powers authorities intend to operate a PACE program and were to approach us, you would have to separately authorize that, but to my knowledge, there are no additional ones that we haven't authorized, at least that's my understanding.
Correct.
Or haven't requested authorization for, I should say.
Thank you.
So I did want to mention that we have done some review of the various PACE program providers that we're presenting to you today. We looked at their program reports, which describe their offerings. We requested their consumer protection policies, and we've taken a look at the judgment in their state validation actions whereby they went to court and got a statewide judgment that declared that their program is legal to operate in California. In doing our due diligence, we did discover that two of the PACE program providers do use Wildan Financial Services as their financial subconsultant. Did want to make that, be aware of that, although we've asked those providers, and both have indicated that, at least as respects their PACE program, they have not had an issue. But the city is very much relying on the joint powers authorities that have vetted these programs. They have checked the financial wherewithal of these companies, and they've looked into whether these companies are able to administer a quality PACE program, so we're very much relying on the JPAs who have done that legwork. And I would just also mention for the benefit of any members of the public listening that, of course, this is a loan on their property with interest and terms and conditions that certainly, just as with a mortgage or anything else, it would behoove a property owner to look into it and compare options and see what makes sense for them. There are a number of PACE program administrators that were kind enough to come today. I'm sure they'd be happy to answer any questions if you have specific questions about their program, and I'm also happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Mr. Garpetian.
Good question regarding financing. Who finances those, those improvements, and where do they get their financing, the homeowners or the commercial property owners? Where do they get their financing from?
The joint powers authority typically will issue bonds, or their investors will finance upfront the cost of not only the improvements on one property, but they can aggregate and finance a number of various properties through a bond issuance.
And then, how do they repay them? Through their property taxes or assessment?
Well, if it's, there are two different legal structures. If it's under a law called AB 811, it's a contractual assessment. If it's under SB 555, it's a special tax. But in either case, it can be added to the tax bill.
Has any of the commercial properties used this program?
Yes. I don't have a number. I think there's a spreadsheet in the staff report that's very small, but I think that might indicate.
Some of the lenders, you know, this is a great program, but some of the lenders will not allow the property owners to file a second loan or lien on the property or assessment on the property. That's why I was asking. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a card from Greg Astorian.
Mayor Najarian, good afternoon, members of the city council, Mr. Archoa and staff. My name is Greg Astorian. I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Association of Realtors, and we wanted to actually share our, publicly, our position about PACE programs and so forth, because not only our association, but on a state level, California Association of Realtors has had a lot of exposure through their Realtors with the programs like this. So I will be reading you a ready, readied statement. The Glendale Association of Realtors supports expansion of opportunities for homeowners to procure or obtain loans to increase the energy efficiencies of their homes. However, we as Realtors want to warn or caution the homeowners, the end consumers, that these types of liens are not without their challenges and problems. To begin with, they carry a higher interest rate than that of an equity or a credit line, normally anywhere between 6% and 9%. Of course, they're easier to qualify for, and the reason that they're easier to qualify for is because a PACE lien is similar to a property tax lien. It shows up on the property tax bill and is paid at the same time and the same manner as property taxes are. The PACE lien is also similar to property tax lien in that it is a super priority lien. Such a lien is senior to all, all private liens, including any deeds of trust for existing mortgages. Then there is the issue of deductibility of the interest.
Sorry, can you read that one more time? That last sentence?
So the PACE liens are also similar to property tax liens in that they are a super priority lien. Such a lien is senior to all private liens, including any deeds of trust for existing mortgages. Then there is also the deductibility of interest issue. According to Eternal Revenue Service, the only tax assessment that is deductible is the tax assessment that is connected to the valuation of your property. Any interest rate on any additional assessment may or may not be deductible. These are matters of disclosures, and the reason that I bring this up is so the vendors and the companies that you're working with would be in a position to disclose these things, because a lot of problems occur because of non-disclosure of these issues. Secondly, they often include administrative fees to the JPA underwriting the program, as you may know, and often, part of those fees goes back to the cities as part of the JPA. Most importantly, while FHA has recently issued guidelines that would preserve priority payments for the first lien mortgages, I have to tell you that because these loans continue with the home upon the sale, some lenders are very leery of making loans on homes with a PACE lien attached to it. If I may have another minute or so. FHFA...
One more minute.
FHFA, Federal Housing Finance Agency, which is the conservative and the regulator for Fannie and Freddie, as of 2010, has told these two agencies, which encompass most of the loans that are available, to make sure that all loan documents require approval or consent for PACE lien. So that's an important issue. In conclusion, for transparency purposes, we want to make sure that if this is going to be available to our homeowners in City of Glendale, they better make sure to check with their tax attorneys, their accountants, as well as with the lenders, because the lending part of it, the subordination part of it, may become an issue. With that, I thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion. Let me go to Mr. Sinanian.
I was going to ask staff if there's anything you want to retort to that, but I want to thank Mr. Astorian for bringing it up. I think it's, I expect these disclosures to be mandatory for any contract, for any resident or business that becomes part of PACE. And PACE is present, you know, all throughout the state and up and down the coast, and it was in place in Glendale, so it's, we're not doing anything, it's not we're opening a new program, we're just inviting two more vendors to operate in Glendale. But I think it's a great warning to any resident or any business that becomes part of the program.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Astorian makes very, very valid points, and they've been points of concern for lenders, including Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac. Those are mortgage companies or lenders who at one time would not be involved in the PACE program. In response to that, because it had actually affected the progress of the program, the state of California in 2014, Governor Brown signed into what's called a mortgage loss reserve on the state level, and it funded to the tune of about $10 million a year. And that was used as, I'll call it for lack of a better term, an insurance policy for those lenders, so that they had some ease and some place for relief in the event that there was an issue and a default, because Mr. Astorian's right, this would take precedent over the mortgage, like a tax lien. It's much more of a concern for some on the residential side than it is the commercial side, because the commercial side is treated a little bit differently and has some different reporting requirements. But the points of, you know, being, doing your due diligence as a homeowner and making sure you ask the right questions, that you vet the firms, that when you're taking, when you're buying a house, you ask and check on what liens are on that house, those are all things that I would hope our residents would do regardless of whether it's a PACE program, a mortgage program, or any kind of a loan program. So we would certainly encourage, as Mr. Astorian did, that folks, when they do pursue this, ask the right questions and do their due diligence before they go forward with it.
But adding these programs to our existing programs, is it possible to add the language in there that they have to disclose some of the issues that was going, other homeowners had, or it's?
Well, Mr. Garpetian, my understanding is those are real estate disclosure answers that are disclosures that have to be made regardless, but I, to the extent that we could include something, I don't know about that. I, you know, we could certainly explore that. Our position was to try to open this up to interested parties, make sure that the JPAs, because that's essentially what you're approving today, is the JPAs, they include numerous financial institutions and lending agencies. I couldn't give you a number, but each of those have a number of agencies within them that can operate under that particular JPA. And Miss Godinez vetted those JPAs. So to the extent that we could write something in, I would defer to our esteemed legal counsel, but I think it's possible. And one other, there was a comment about fees. That is true. There are some that allow fees to go back or can make an arrangement with the city for some of those fees to go back. We haven't made any of those arrangements. We didn't intend to make those kind of arrangements. It wasn't our intention to get involved to the extent of taking money off of these situations, simply using these programs to promote sustainability and help our residents put in more efficient air conditioning systems and solar panels and those type of things.
I have a question.
One more question?
From city attorney. In our report, it indicates that two of the PACE administrators are using the services of Wilden Financial, and this is the company that we are currently in litigation with for our water rates issue. And I was wondering, is this, I just wanted, was my concern today and say, what would happen if they have an issue, a homeowner have an issue with the financial services and Wilden is involved, and we are involved on this side? Just wanted to make sure that we are safe in that part.
Members of council, Councilmember Garpetian, the city would have no liability. It's a contract that Wildan has with these providers, and we're not, we're not, you know, representing or warranting their work, it's just that's who they're using, and we have no contractual or privity or duty to the homeowners on that particular level. So it's, from our perspective, it's a separate issue.
Okay. Again, I just want to be on the safe side, because if a homeowner comes as knowingly knew that they're using a company that you were in litigation with, but you allowed them to join this new, join the existing contracts, I just want to, again, I want to emphasize on that, that we have no liability on that.
Correct. And again, this is just authorizing these JPAs to operate in our jurisdiction, and we don't control who they're hiring for their particular services.
Thank you.
And according to the report, the financiers will be executing indemnification agreements to protect the city, so that we have that in writing.
That's correct.
So the bottom line here is that we are offering these programs, the PACE programs for the community, if they would like to do any work on their homes, residential or commercial, the city will have little or no responsibility in the programs, and it's, I don't see a problem with this, so I would approve this expansion of the program.
Well, I have a couple of questions, and I guess I just don't get it. Why would a homeowner take a loan that's a super priority loan, that's going to charge greater interest than what you can get on the private market, and have questions about the deductibility of it, and not be dischargeable in any other sort of bankruptcy situation? So I'm, I mean, what's so good about it? Why can't they go to a private lender and get a second, and get a home equity loan or get a home improvement loan, and pay it in monthly installments rather than twice a year, and have it deducted, and have all the regulations and protections that the government affords to those home equity loans? I don't, I don't get it. Plus, if the city takes any action today, that's going to be their number one selling point. City of Glendale approves the PACE loan for you, and the unsophisticated lenders are going to, unsophisticated borrowers are going to jump all over that, maybe not realize what they're getting into, and create all sorts of other problems with their other, the place holders and priority of their other loans on the property. I don't know. What's so good about this deal?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, our position was to open up the opportunities for residents, and it would be up to them then to vet what is the best deal for them. I don't know if there are different requirements. It may be, is it easier than a bank? Does it depend on your credit? I don't know, but what we simply wanted to do is to get folks that, and we included folks that are under sanctioned PACE programs, and allow the residents more of an opportunity to shop for financing for these type, this specific type of projects.
I don't like the City of Glendale's involvement in it. We carry a lot of credibility with our residents. We are highly viewed and highly rated by our residents, and, you know, I would die at the chance to be a lender and to be able to say that the City of Glendale approves our lending program for you. That's going to be their number one selling point. Forget the fine print, forget the rates, forget the other alternatives, you know. And one, two easy bills a year with your tax bill.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Najarian, about what you've? Can I ask him a question?
Sure.
Because I'm curious, when you have a home equity line of credit and you're moving, do you take that loan with you, or does that stay with the property? Does anyone know?
The equity line?
I bet you know.
It's...
You pay it off.
It's your home loan.
So what's different about this is if I'm going to put solar panels on my house, and the solar panels are very expensive to buy upfront, and you're maybe looking at a 20-year payback to where you don't start really saving money necessarily from that, you don't, you don't start, you don't, you haven't paid off that investment in your energy savings, maybe for 20 years, or whatever it is, or 10 years, but maybe you're paying $15,000 upfront, and you put it on your house. If you do that yourself, and let's say a year later, for whatever reason, you decide to sell your house, you now have to pitch the new buyer. Your house is $15,000 more expensive maybe than it would have been the house next door because you have those solar panels, and maybe you can convince someone of that or maybe not. But the way this works, because you've now done the PACE program, and that payment, that loan is attached to your property taxes, that then goes to the next buyer, right? So that buyer now, they maybe can buy your house or not, but they, they're going to be paying for the energy savings that they're going to get, because you, as the person who paid that money upfront, if you move right away, you're not getting the benefit of that $15,000 investment. The next person who takes over the property is. That's why this is structured differently. People still have the choice. If you want to do solar panels, you can take a home equity line of credit right now and maybe pay less. You can pay out of pocket. You can do something where one of these companies comes in and they're financing it, or they're owning it and you're just getting a dividend, or this gives you another option. Make it as something that's rolled into your property tax, and if you decide to sell, the next person then who's getting the benefit of those savings will have to share in the costs for what they're getting. So it's just another option for the homeowner.
And if the Realtor doesn't disclose it, the Realtor's going to get sued. Most people, when they buy a million-dollar house, they figure my taxes are going to be $10,000 a year, plus or minus the special assessment. And if they're not careful, and if they don't realize that there's actually another, up to 20%, I saw, that you can loan another $200,000 on there, guess who you're going to sue first? The Realtors. Oh, I didn't know about it. And then, my problem is that we're, the City of Glendale is giving a stamp of approval on this, and I personally cannot do that. We're getting involved in the finance scheme and the marketing of these things, and I don't think it's something that the city should get any further into.
If I may try to address that issue, and very good comments from Councilmember Friedman. The PACE program is in Glendale already. It's here, it's operating. It's been authorized by the county. It's, I mean, the only thing that's happening is that you have a very, you know, you have a very narrow market in terms of who's operating here. The less carriers there, the less operators there are, the more stringent their terms are going to be, and the less choice the residents are going to have. All we're doing is just saying, okay, here, these two are also allowed to operate here in this territory. So we're not really deciding whether PACE should be here or shouldn't be here. PACE is already here. It's been here for a while. All we're doing is giving more choice to the residents.
And isn't the bottom line due diligence? It behooves, I mean, if you're...
Like anything else in a real estate transaction.
If you're trying to get a loan, you're going to look everywhere, you're going to ask all the questions, just as you said, so it behooves the residents or the commercial owners to do their due diligence and ask questions. If there is a loan that's cheaper or, you know, a better deal, then that's the one that they should take. But this is giving them choices and opportunity for choices.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's the way we looked at it. And again, we have vetted this, Christine has vetted this. There's no question, Mr. Mayor, one of the downsides that you hear often in this, at least especially on the residential side, is a disclosure issue. And Mr. Astorian mentioned that too. But I think you have disclosure issues on other things as well, but that is, for this program, one of the things that I saw more commonly come up as a downside. On the positive side is it's another opportunity for folks to do this kind of work to their house, another funding source. It stays with the house versus your home loan or a loan through the contractor. Again, we approached it from the standpoint of giving our residents a greater opportunity, because Mr. Sinanian's right. Currently, if you want to participate in a PACE program, you can only go through the HERO program, which is the county's program. And one of the downsides to that is it's very bureaucratic, it's very slow, and it has, it's very set with regards to the terms, conditions, and choices that you have. This just, we looked at this as affording individuals more choices. Again, to your question, one of the stipulations is, is that the legislative body of an agency has to approve the JPA to do business in that city. So that's, you know, that is a point of, they can't, you know, just come in under the PACE program and do business. They have to have that, at least say, okay, we're approving this JPA to work in the city and whatever members of that JPA happen to be. But are they going to say that they've been approved by the City of Glendale?
Yes.
Absolutely. They're going to say the council approved us to operate in the City of Glendale.
I have another question. If I have a home equity loan for solar panels, and I fall behind in the payments, I can call up the lender and renegotiate, restructure the terms of that loan. I'm not sure the same can be done with a PACE loan, because it's on your tag, it becomes a tax lien. And tax liens are unforgiving. They are the super liens. So why is this good for our residents? Depriving them of... Depriving them of the chance to even negotiate with a lender if they've fallen upon a blip in hard times, or, or anything of that matter? Or to even, I mean, I, I don't know.
How's, how's our other programs? The existing programs that we have that our residents can use?
For the county program.
Right. How is it, how is it structured? Is it the same way? It's a tax lien?
Yes.
If they want to do it, it takes longer, because it's a county program? But it is the same, same, same process? And it's a tax lien that they would?
Same process, except you're limited to, to just the lenders and contractors the county has included, and you have to go through that single process. So it is a bit of a bureaucracy, and it can take some time. Folks have, have made complaints about how long it takes. I don't know, I haven't been through it. As Ms. Cadenas says, we do have some participation in that program.
So there is a huge demand for it, that we're trying to accommodate the residents not to go through the county's process and use the, the city's basically avenue to get the loan, to do the improvement? Is there a huge demand? Or do we have a number as to how many use the county's process? Because solar panels are different. With solar panels, the same things happen, you know? They, they use the city's name. They said, city's paying half of it, there is a subsidy, we'll do this, you, you, you know, you, you save on, they use city's name. So it's the same thing. But I wanted to know if, if there's that huge of a demand that, or what percentage of, of our residents use the, the county's program?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Garpetian, I, I would not say there's, there's a huge demand. I don't know specifically what the demand is, but I, I would never use the word huge. We don't have people beating our door down for this. One of the things, again, and, you know, again, we looked at it as, as, as broadening the opportunities for our residents to have choices, and we hoped it might spur more conservation and more folks to think about getting involved in conservation programs, because that's important to the utility, obviously, and something we want to promote. But we don't have people knocking our door down. I wouldn't say huge. The amount of people that have participated in the HERO program is a decent number, but a small, mostly residential. But again, it's, it's not, you know, it's not opening the floodgates. I don't anticipate you're going to see a lot of folks doing this, because at the end of the day, it still is expensive. You know, we did our solar presentation to you. It's, most of these retrofits are not cheap. So folks have to think long and hard before they make that decision and do the math and, and do the, you know, what are they saving versus what are they paying? And what are the long-term ramifications of the payments made? And Mr. Najarian, you certainly make a point of, you know, comparing the type of loan, tax lien versus, versus a, a straight loan or, or a home equity loan. Those are all, all decisions that an individual homeowner and business owner is going to have to make, but after hopefully vetting this thoroughly before they make that decision. Again, at the end of the day, it was, it was trying to open up a little bit more, more choice for, for our folks, and like I said, hopefully helping promote conservation programs.
But is it a better choice? That, that's my question. The more choices don't count for me. It's just not the number of choices we give them. It's, are they better choices? And if you can tell me why this is a better choice, I think I would have a different look at it. But I see the, I don't see it as being a better choice to traditional financing.
I, Mr. Mayor, I can't say what, what, one over the other is better, and I can't say this is a better choice. I think it, it's often falls to the individual homeowner, what suits them best. But I, I couldn't tell you that this is a better choice than a traditional loan. It's a better choice than financing it with SolarCity directly, for instance, is one example on, on putting up solar panels. I, I couldn't tell you that.
Okay.
I think, again, it, it depends on the individual homeowner to see what's best for them.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments at this point? So there are five resolutions. Needs to be taken separately?
They can be taken all at the same time.
Okay. What, what's someone like to move them?
Second.
From A through E?
Second.
Second. Roll call. Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
No.
All right. That concludes our business end of this agenda.